Starting at 4:32 PM. Catherine, can you please do roll call?
Yes ma'am, we've got Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Jeff Dodd.
Here.
Beth Goff.
Here.
Kyle Iverson. Is, hold on a sec, I've got somebody waiting to get in. Nope. Um. I'm sorry, so Kyle Iverson is not present. Rafael Rios.
Here.
Michael Baldini.
Here.
And Rosara Segura.
Here.
Okay.
Welcome also, members of the public who may be joining us. It's very important that you're here, thank you very much for listening to us. Can we do pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure, you have to. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. For which we stand as one nation.
One nation.
Under God. In the physical school of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions about the agenda? Does anybody want to pull anything, or?
No, not from staff side.
Trustee Segura, the only thing we might do is move Bob Harris a little bit later under reports, but I think we'll just watch and see when he arrives.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, so no changes.
So the agenda is adopted by consensus. Um. A public comment on closed session. We, at this time, we did not get anything on closed session for public comment, so we can go ahead and go to closed session. And we shall return about 5:30 approximately.
Go ahead and read out those items, will you?
Thank you. Um, we, 4.1, we have conference with labor negotiators. 4.2, public employment. 4.3, pending litigation, conference with legal counsel. 4.4, conference with real property negotiators. And it should be very interesting, we'll see you on closed session.
Yes.
Uh, thank you very much for your patience. We are back in public session at approximately 5:51. Um. Trustee Iverson is out of reach at the moment. He will try to connect as the meeting goes on, so hopefully he will be able to be with us for the rest of the meeting. Um, there are two announcements that we need to make on closed session. Uh, number one, we approved the hiring of an academic administrator. This is a temporary assignment. Dr. William Allen Dixon, interim senior dean. He, career education, workforce, and academic pathways. His contract will start October 1st, 2020, and it will end on June 30th, 2021. His salary placement is range 19, step C on the salary schedule. Uh, the second announcement is, um, this evening in closed session by a vote of six trustees, one absent, that being trustee Iverson. We approved, we accepted a settlement of pending litigation with a tenured faculty member. The settlement includes monetary and non-monetary positions. Those are the only two announcements coming forward from closed session. Um, and now, um, this public, now we go to public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to share concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to the opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment of the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing on the agenda for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the Board place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Uh, we'll review each, each comment shall last no longer than five minutes. And we did not receive any public comment, and so, we go with our agenda on number seven. Seven, we go to, um, reports. 7.1, academic senate report. Dr. Tejada, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Board members and fellow colleagues. Um, I just wanted to inform the Board that at our last academic senate meeting, we initially approved 10 revised Board policies and administrative procedures. So that means that those 10 will be moving through the transmittal process. The, that happened as a result of the work that the Board Policy, or the Policy Revision Task Force, uh, did this summer. Uh, our next academic senate meeting, we will be, um, moving to approve five more, so 15 in total will be put through the process, or the transmittal process, early this year. We are also in phase two of the Academic Senate Instructional Design Institute. Um, we are currently in the, um, we'll be beginning, um, on Monday, the third session of the Distance Ed, Distance Education Pedagogy Workshop. We have hired four, um, curricul, uh, I'm sorry, culturally responsive pedagogy trainers, and we will be meeting with them to create the curricula for that workshop, and that workshop will then happen, it'll be a four-week-long workshop, and that'll be happening at the beginning of October. So, and then, let's see, what else do I have? Um, and that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you very much. Hope everybody's doing okay with the climate, the effects of climate change we're enduring. Thank you.
Actually, very interesting and kind of depressing and sad moments we're leaving. Um, 7.2, associated students of Napa Valley College. Um, I suppose, we don't have a president yet, so we don't get anything. Um, 7.4, classified association report. Valerie Mald, president of the, um, classified association. Do we have a report from her?
Uh, no, she had no report this evening.
Thank you. Um, 7.5, classified senate report. Marty Shoemaker?
Marty is here, are you there, Marty?
Is he muted?
I don't know, he might be. Um, let's, let's give him a technological break, and if he can come back and hand report at a later time, we could do that.
We will do. 7.6, faculty association report. Kristi Iowa-Markow.
Hi, I'm here. I have, hi, glad to see everybody again this month. Um, we had our first general meeting today, faculty general meeting for the union, and I, I brought up an issue there, and I was encouraged by faculty to discuss the issue here at the Board meeting as well. And it's not a new thing, but it is something that I think I wanted to bring up and highlight, because I think there's increased urgency considering where we are technologically. And again, uh, the issue is part-time office hours. So I have had several faculty come to me via email and through phone calls, and the faculty are in the fine arts, they're in the political sciences, and they are saying, "Hey, I'm teaching an asynchronous class," which means we don't meet, we just, you know, we post and we communicate that way, and I have had students asking me desperately for office hours, "What are your office hours?" So that we can meet face-to-face and I can talk to you about issues I've been having in the class. And the part-time faculty asked me, "What should I tell these students?" And, you know, unfortunately, as union president, I of course want to tell them, "Well, they're your students, you want to be there for your students, I want you to be there for your students, but you're not being paid to be there for your students." And I know I, I spoke about this at an earlier Board meeting, and I do want to thank the administration that there were, there was, as a result, we did go to negotiations on that issue, and, um, and we did end up expanding some of our office hours, but those expanded office hours only cover English and math. And yet, we have these students who are in advanced psychology classes, in photography classes, in classes where they really do need that, that face-to-face interaction, and they need that feedback, individual feedback from their instructors. If they take a full-time instructor's class, they get five hours per week. If they take a part-time instructor's class, they get nothing. And so, you know, I think that that is something that in light of what is happening right now, we really need to revisit the idea of part-time office hours, because it's inequitable for our students to have different levels of access to their instructors, and I think that that office hour time is more important than ever. So for tonight, that is my report.
Thank you. I like the hair.
Oh, thank you.
Um. Trustee Segura, we now have Bob Harris, who can make his report. Or, uh, confidential.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris, thank you for being here.
No, thank you, I'm sorry I'm late, but thank you for indulging me. On behalf of the Administrative Senate, I just wanted to make a report that we've started this process in the season and the school year moving forward. Uh, we have several initiatives we're going to do, and one that we feel is very important is to develop and rework our mission and vision statement for administrators and confidential personnel as well. And part of that is in, uh, including language and revisions specific to diversity, inclusion, as well as a code of ethics and standards to, to move forward. The same process, I believe, is going, is concurrent with the academic senate moving forward, and that's going to be a process we're going to do as we revamp and relook at our entire constitution bylaws. Although we're not a representative group per se with a CBA, we do need to be cohesive and be, uh, cognizant of the issues going on on campus and how best to support the campus in all that we do. So that's going to be the undertaking we're going to have for this year initially, as well as continue to work to do the daily business of making the college run smoothly and to support our students, because as we all know, without the students, we don't have anything, so they are everything. So that's my report. Thank you for indulging me, and sorry I'm late, but I'm, I'm here now, so thank you so much.
Thank you, that was all good to hear.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Did, um, were we able to get ahold of, um, Mr. Shoemaker?
No, we'll just have to accept that he's not available this evening.
Okay, and so, 7.7. Um, Mr. President, you are on.
Hi, thank you. Um, we have, normally it's, I don't have a full plate, but tonight, we have several presentations, and I, I wanted to lead and, um, with, um, the team from the Office of Institutional Advancement and Carol Lee Catallica in doing a, a presentation on what trustee Baker brought up last time, which was, "See How Fast We Work," which is, "Hey, what about, what about the new website?" And, um, as fate would have it, we are going to make that presentation. Carol Lee has promised to do this in a beautifully concise and direct way, he says. So, thank you, and take it away, Carol Lee, you have to share a screen. So Carol Lee Catallica is the Director of the Office of Institutional Advancement, and she can self-introduce her team. You're muted.
Thank you, I think Catherine, you have to unshare so I can share.
Let's, hold on. There we go.
Just, um, a little preview, or review, rather. Hi, everyone. We had a, a project going for quite some time now, through several versions of fires at COVID and a lot of things going on. But we have 99.9% completion now on phase one of the website upgrade project. And just to share, this was a joint project between Institutional Advancement and IT and our consulting team from Adaptive Edge. There it goes. And then, just again, some review. The new site is focused on external audiences. It is mobile-friendly, it has our branded and well-known home address. Um, we're hoping very much that it will help students find the products and services they're after, engage them better, get them to the services and support they need, and then take, take the majority of internal-facing content and move it to an intranet or the Office 365 platform that IT is working to migrate everyone to. Um, and then to just make sure, right now, our existing site is very large. Um, very little is ever deleted or taken down, and there's a lot of redundant and therefore often out-of-date information that exists on, on way too many places, so we're working very hard to keep it focused. And, um, while no one ever hits 100% 508 compliance for disabled persons, we are much, much closer to being compliant now that we're signed, so. Um, I'm going to give you a tour of the site now, if I can share that screen. Just get this animal away. Um, so this is the new homepage, you can all ooh and ah now. It is primarily focused on what we've come to understand are the, the primary things of interest to the students and the community. So, apply, you know, start them out, right, you know? The academic programs and our offerings, and then our resources and support areas, and I'll walk you through those in a little bit more detail. Um, this final button links back to our information on the COVID response at the college page. As we scroll down, we will see the e-brochure, which is a separate software platform that admissions and records initiated, and it allows you to click boxes on topics of interest, it builds PDF for you, and it emails it to you. Next up, we have event highlights, and you can hover to get a description, and then you can click through to the various landing pages, and they can be internal to the site or external. The register for vote, for instance, takes you to our TurboVote platform that Bob V got us linked up with. Back to the homepage. Um, the bottom of the page, above the footer anyway, are featured programs. So these are just highlights that we will rotate on a, we're not quite sure, weekly or monthly basis, to highlight various academic programs. Lastly, on the homepage is our footer, which Troy, one of our consultants, just wrapped up moments ago, and, uh, it has the required one-click link to the Board of Trustees and some other key pieces of information. Going back to the top line, under our About menu, we have pretty much some of the same content that's in the current About, uh, with the addition of human resources and jobs, as well as the newsroom, which is, I think, just about ready to launch. Under Apply, we, um, we really took a very student-centric, uh, approach, so each pathway is coming from the position of where the student is coming from, it's audience-oriented. So if you are a new student, you can click through, get your five steps to enroll, and each of these are designed on an accordion, which, um, is, is really a nice way to organize a lot of information, particularly on a mobile platform. Um, so we, we give students access to each step. Um, following that, we have our programs. So, um, under All Programs, there is an index of all of them, and, and I can't, I must apologize, I don't know why chemistry is coming up above A at the moment.
Oh. Chemistry is, yes?
Oh, it goes.
I think chemistry department must have had a little scale there.
Yeah. But you, you can sort by department, division, or program, and we will be adding cross-references to this list. For instance, um, Business Administration will likely be its own entry, because sometimes people don't look for business entrepreneurship, they don't understand that that's the name of the program, and so they would look for Business Administration or Accounting. Um, so we'll be adding those cross-referenced terms to this list to just make it as easy as possible for people to find things. Digital Design Graphics is another example, that will come up under drafting, as well as DDGT. Um, and then, um, there is another navigation method for all the categories of our programs, and this list was developed with the academic deans, thank you to Bob V and whomever else is here. Um, and then, you know, it just kind of drills you down, you keep, okay, arts, yes, and you keep going, and then you land on the arts page. And you might say, "Well, that's kind of a strange thing to have on arts, that digital art and design," or, or dance, well, isn't dance in, you know, PE or now kinesiology? But this platform allows us to put it in both places, so that the student who thinks about it being in one area will find it there, and the student who thinks about it in another way will find it, uh, in another spot. One of the pages that, um, we were very lucky to have videos from Charlie Monahan. Um, he did a series of videos for each of the CTE programs, and we were able to embed these, um, and you can watch them either on the small window.
Napa is blessed with really the perfect climate for growing grapes. We have these cool winters, these long, warm summers, that really helps with the chemistry of the grapes. They get the sugar, but they create a lot of.
So I, I won't take up all the time showing you all the wonderful, beautiful videos he showed us, but, um, each, each academic program page has a description, this is primarily taken from the catalog. If there's a video that's available, it is here. We also have, again, some accordions that link to the degree information, and the, and these link directly to the catalog. So, as I said, one of the, um, one of our goals is to have the information only living in one spot. The catalog should be the, the place of record, and so we link to that. Catherine Rhino is working now to upgrade or revise this site to match the design of the new website. Um, we put in career opportunities, often we had this information, but when we didn't, we linked them to the Salary Surfer, uh, platform that we are partnered with. And if there were specific resources for this program, we would add them here, but primarily, these are currently linked to our, our biggest support, um, services of the Mass Success Center and the Writing Success Center. And then, we can close these back up. And on your phone, I think you've probably experienced that, where you click something, it opens, and then you can close it and move to the next piece of information. Um, these work just like that on a mobile device. And we have the program coordinator, um, in Paul GE for this particular program. Moving on, uh, we categorized and sorted the student service and resources by, um, like things, so Health, Safety, and Support gets you to the Child Development Center, Parking and Police, the Police Emergency App, the Ombudsman for Students in Need, Transportation and Health Services. At the moment, most of these link back to the old site, and they, that content's going to be migrated in phase two. We have a staff directory that is integrated with, um, the Active Directory as managed by IT, and we're working to expand some of the searchable fields and, and what is available. But you can call, email, or find, um, room numbers by, right from this page or by drilling down. We are also trying to meet Bob Parker, Bob V's request, to be able to search Bob and find Robert, but that is not quite implemented yet, sorry. Um, a somewhat late add to phase one was Workforce Training Center, where, um, we can promote and, um, guide people to training based on what employers need, public agencies need, and this is Charlie's area predominantly. Um, it is arranged and organized much like the academic programs with, um, instead of this being degree information, these are the courses available. And then you can also link out to Request Custom Training, and we're using the Office 365 forms platform, which is mobile-friendly and hopefully will become our form standard over time. Uh, lastly, or towards the end anyway, there is our miniportal. This is a replication of the existing miniportal on the existing site, but soon, uh, will be a single sign-on, so a student, uh, will be able to click here and access all their resources through one login. And our A to Z links back to the old site right now, uh, until we move all the rest of the content over, or thereabouts. Um, are there any questions, or does any of my team want to add anything? Or does any of my team want to add anything?
This is Jennifer. I have one really quick question about the menus. One of the things that's becoming really popular in web design right now is what they call a mega-menu. Is that something that SharePoint allows?
I'm not familiar with the mega-menu.
Yeah, you kind of have to see it to understand it. Yeah, so I can send some pictures of examples. I just wonder, because it does make navigation a little bit easier if it is an option. It's just, it's same content, just a different way of organizing it.
Okay, is it like a site index?
Because we... There's some things that there's like, most visited is an option. So like, things that people go to frequently, which is usually like, how do I enroll, that sort of stuff. But it's also like, it allows you to put photos and tables inside of your menus, your dropdowns, so that there, so it's not just a listing. It makes it a little bit where you could actually make subcategories within a category. So I'll send you some snapshots.
No, thank you, that sounds...
It may not be something, it may not be an option in this CMS. But if it is, I'm really learning to like them a lot.
Oh, cool. Yeah, that sounds intuitive and useful. And if it takes advantage of most visited as being a category, I can imagine that's really cool. I did forget to share with you the new calendar. It is actually a consolidation of multiple calendars. We currently have about 10 on the old site. But this will be color, well, it is, these are color-coded. Eventually, these buttons will be color-coded so that you can just look at the section that you're interested in, or a roll-up of all events on campus. And gives you a little preview off to the side. And it will hopefully reduce, we currently have, as I mentioned, just way too many calendars and way too many places. So thank you to Holly and Dr. Kraft for recommending the color coding and sorting approach.
Carol Lee, this is Eileen. I'm wondering, I noticed as you went through the Faculty, the Directory, that our ranks are not included. And I'm wondering if that's at all possible. We're not all instructors. We are professors. And then tenured, and then non-tenured folks are instructors. And if we could make that distinction for the students, I think that would be a good thing.
Yeah, no, that's a great observation. Let me make sure I... Do you know, well, I'll circle with you on the best source of that data?
Sure, we've got, yeah, okay. We can provide that for you. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you.
What I would suggest, Carol Lee, this is fabulous stuff. You know, really good, stuff that we have been hoping we could accomplish for years and years. And it, you know, I guess my overarching piece is what we hear from community. It's so difficult to do, you know, and then whatever they say afterwards, when you're talking to people. This is clearly a huge step in the right direction. And it's about student success. So, and if it feels like I'm kind of ending you, I am. But so, but I would request, you know, faculty and staff or other comments, certainly not cutting off board here, but, you know, connect with Carol Lee or team on the specifics. And it will just keep getting better and better. What's the next phase, Carol Lee?
Well, we are going to release the address on Monday via Holly's All-Campus email. And ask people to start taking a look, making sure that faculty are happy with their program pages. And then we're gonna start off on the Intranet project, where we move content to an internal, but cloud-based platform. And then Phase Two will be to move the rest of the content, hopefully not all 12,000 pages, and decommission the old site.
Who is going to be, you've actually made me trigger, triggered a question. In terms of like, just ongoing content. So if somebody's unhappy with their page, who's responsible for building the content and making certain that it gets up-to-date for each division, department, whatever?
So our proposed management model was to have an editor who would make a submission to their dean or director supervisor, who would approve it. Then it would ultimately go to our webmaster to make sure it's got the right voice, it's got the right look, it's consistent, it's not information that's somewhere else already. And then they would do the actual publishing. We haven't pulled the trigger on that piece yet. So at the moment, that anybody who has changes will be emailing, I think, the Departmental OIA email to share comments. We've also considered a forum for people to share their comments. We'll be figuring that out by Monday, I promise. But we also, we do not have a webmaster position, a hire. It's a vacancy on hold at the moment. So hopefully, that will only be for the short term.
I knew you couldn't resist a little pitch. That's good. Hey, excellent work. I think the board, on behalf, you know, but it's good. I can see smiling faces. This is a huge step forward. Thank you, team. I see you out there, Scott, Jose, and back to your first team piece, and just make sure that they get there.
Yeah, no, Scott, Jose, Daniel, Eric, Troy, and Crystal. But we also, we worked with other teams, the academic deans, the Student Affairs Outreach Committee. We've been helped by many.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I can just keep going, Madam Chair, we'll move to a Student Equity and Inclusivity piece right now. And I'm going to share, as soon as Catherine gives me that, right? Just a couple of things with you. Our... I'm sorry, did you give me that possibility here?
Yes, you should be able to share.
Yeah, Office of the President, there we go. You know, one of the things that we talked about over the summer and, you know, for a long while, was, you know, getting this idea of diversity, inclusion, and equity kind of upfront, especially with, you know, more past events, current events, and all that we have talked about. We started this initiative on equity in earnest, with visions of success and pathways, you know, clearly two years ago. And we incorporated some of that into our strategic plan, as you recall. Then over the summer, it really got, I would say, it was a desperate call for equity issues. And the Chancellor weighed in with a call to action. There were a lot of initiatives just kind of flying around. The Board, as you know, did some things. I issued this, and I think you, most of you saw this, this week. This was, it's a little different than what you saw. It was an email that went out. But it was a recap of what we've done. I've received several emails, thank you, from Board and Staff. And basically, it was addressing that we are on track. We are intentionally moving forward not to do what I think so many initiatives can happen with so many. Where it becomes hot, you deal with it for a while, and then it just falls away. And I think our commitment was to follow through on what I'm remembering now is DEI, which is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity. And I'll start to use that kind of piece. So you can see some highlighted piece, Meaningful Dialogue with Staff and Students, the Open Dialogues this Spring and Summer kicked off a series of conversation. We're gonna continue Dialogues for Understanding moving forward. This is fast right now, but it's just to try to get you in the loop. Flex Day, there were so many great things that happened on Flex Day, from the Call to Action with Cabinet and our Chair Rosada, doing a kind of open forum, if you will, with faculty and staff. Robin and her team, you know, did some things. I think Jim McGowan, along with, was that Robin and Jim, is that right? Yeah, did a really nice flex presentation focusing on equity. And, you know, the gap, or really looking at the metrics of gap. Why are some students falling behind? What can we do? And if we measure it, that's not enough. Hey, why don't we measure it and then figure out implementation to close the gap? Right? And that's really important for us to do. So we are still very much involved in that effort. Moving forward, we're recruiting, as I've shared with some of you, a Senior Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. That process is going along. We, to, I think Eileen had a very good point in me addressing the faculty. We have not hired all that we would like to hire all across the board. And I felt, I think along with many people in institution, that focusing on a Senior Director of Diversity and Equity is a strong thing that we need to do. It's a funded position through several streams of income provided, not necessarily all out of general fund. We've elevated this position so it reports to the President, and therefore has more clout, I think. More basis and kind of initiative to show that it's a leadership position, and we're standing behind that. We are also working, this person will also chair, co-chair, the District Equity and Inclusivity Committee. It has done a tremendous job, the committee, over the past 10 years, from zero to very, very strong initiatives. And it's time that we rebooted it based on current events. So we're, the Council of Presidents is taking a look at the committee structure, how we're gonna meet, and how it moves forward. We have joined the Equity Leadership Alliance, which is, I believe that's USC, and I can, I'm sorry if I'm, yes, I'm seeing nods, thank you. They have done an incredible job at assembling materials, system surveys. And we joined for the first year. Thank you for, you know, understanding that that costs money, but I felt it was a critical aspect for us to do as well. And we had, I believe, Charles, you'll have to nod, because I can see you. I think we had our first training for some folks today. These happen all throughout the year. We have five spots each time, and they're not the same people. I think we would like to spread these training opportunities across the institution. And they're varied and wonderful and in-depth. And that's a racial equality convening series. I'm pretty excited about all of this, to tell you the truth. I think it's been a while coming. And, you know, the unfortunate reality is, it really took a very massively public event to get it back on the front burner. And to many people's credit here at the college, I think it's been a measured, student-focused conversation that is not selfish or self-centered in any way. It is really about us as an institution trying to do the very best, and I'm gonna call these, you know, our students, trying to do the very best for our students that is possible. And that's all students. So we are a minority-serving institution, Hispanic-serving institution, and we're represented across the board. So I'm excited by this possibility. And we'll keep bringing you updates each month. Some will be this long, some will be shorter as we work. Let me then move to the next piece. Bob is, there was a question on Napa Valley College SIRID as an evacuation site. And Bob is briefly gonna address that. Thanks, Bob.
So I just wanted to, at the Board meeting on August 13th, the question came up, you know, have we been in contact with the county? Have we worked out what being an evacuation center would look like in the age of COVID-19? And interestingly enough, that meeting had already taken place on August 4th. Chief of Police Amber Wade, Senior Director of Facilities Matt Christensen, met with representatives of the county, the county shelter coordinator, and other staff from the county on August 4th here on our site, looked at our facilities, talked about our facilities, and talked about how we would fit into the overall county evacuation shelter system. And so first of all, looked at the main gym. And the original estimate for the number of people who could be housed in the main gym was 400. But that was before social distancing and COVID-19. And so that is scaled back to 25% of that original, where 100 people could be sheltered in the main gym due to those COVID-19 restrictions. You probably all remember that when we served as an evacuation shelter in 2017 during the fires, the county not only used the main gym, but they also used the mat room in the North Gym and the Student Activities Center, the old cafeteria site. Currently, we have taken the North Gym mat room and the Student Activities Center off the list, at least initially. And that's because currently, the mat room in the North Gym is actually being used by the Police Academy for instruction. It's a space that's large enough for them to do their classroom instruction and maintain social distancing. Also, the Student Activities Center is open to students Monday through Thursday to come in and study and use access to Wi-Fi as a place where they can continue their instruction and do their coursework if they don't have access to those kinds of facilities, or if they're looking for a place that is away from home to do that coursework. And so for that reason, for the reason that we are currently actively using the mat room and the Student Activities Center, we have sort of pulled back on the use of the mat room and the Student Activities Center as evacuation sites. And then finally, we did have the conversation, or they, Matt and Amber, had a conversation with the county about the fact that we do want to serve as an evacuation site, but we are not the primary evacuation site because of the other activities that are happening on campus. And so Crosswalk Church continues to be the primary evacuation site for the county. But we will, we have agreed to, and we would serve as an evacuation site if necessary, using the main gym. So that was the result of that meeting that took place on August 4th with the county.
Continuing to move through the list, let me just say before I introduce Sarah, wants to talk a little bit about our spring schedule. You know, kind of a broad overview. See, community colleges have always been in the vanguard of innovation and flexibility. And I think that that's key for us to recommend and think about. And the focus there is that, and I don't mean this to be too self-serving, is that we are great teachers. You know, as opposed to many universities and research institutions who are not focused on teaching. And although I think universities and colleges across the nation are doing well on their logistics of handling COVID, they're not doing as well in teaching, learning. Our pedagogy, through the Instructional Design Institute and some other pieces, and our teachers being good teachers, student focus has really made a difference. our teachers being good teachers, student focus has really made a difference. So I'm quite excited, honestly, about the opportunities that COVID has presented, even though it's a devastating issue. And if you can kind of understand what I'm trying to say here, it's, you know, nobody would wish this, but we have embraced an innovative approach in such a brilliant way. And hats off to, you know, leadership administrators, staff and faculty who are student-focused more than I think any other sector of the higher education. So with that, Sarah is prepared to talk about our spring semester and where we're going.
Sure. Hi, good evening. I'll do so very briefly. So just as fall got underway, we needed to start thinking about spring 2021. It takes about two months to build a schedule and it will be live in November. So although I wasn't here at NBC in the spring, I shared in the experience that Dr. Kraft described across the state of community colleges, sort of really recognizing the value of flexibility and also how that ran up against our existing processes for scheduling and how far out we need to do that. There was also uncertainty, of course, in the spring and going into summer over which courses we would be able to offer in person or online. And this created challenges that all of us here are familiar with. We know that people build their lives and faculty build their courses around the schedule of classes that we design. So in thinking about how to plan for spring, we were guided by three goals. The first was to provide a degree of certainty, such as that is possible. Number two, to stay in line with all of the current health and safety guidance and regulations that are currently quite restrictive in terms of what we're allowed to offer in person. And number three, to maintain a level of preparedness so that we could switch and open up as this is allowable. So with those in mind, let me just recap that our fall semester is approximately 90% online and 10% in-person. The in-person classes support the essential workforce in accordance with the governor's definition. And the online classes are about half asynchronous and half synchronous. So we are building our spring schedule on the same parameters with one key difference. We are identifying upfront the synchronous classes that could shift to in-person. And over the next month, we will develop criteria, again relying on state and local guidance and input from faculty around when and how to make a final determination about whether this subset of classes can in fact shift to in-person. And on a final note, I just want to add that I think all of us continue to miss the on-campus in-person interactions with students, but I feel just so confident in the investment that we've made in online teaching and the support services that are available to students. And we are providing very high-quality online instruction.
Thank you, Sarah. And part of this is, we're trying to move towards scheduling and, you know, an overarching institution that is a bit demand-driven in trying to focus on, you know, what is it that students need? We find that our counts are down a bit. I think maybe 8% would be appropriate, which I have found, except with very few exceptions across the state. Some are significantly down. And we've talked about this before, but I'll just say it for the record today, in a recession, economic recession, people flock to community college to, because they've lost their jobs because, and so they're retraining. In an emergency, that behavior doesn't look the same. They're not sure, they're hunkering down a little bit. So it, there are, this is, we're in an emergency situation and in an economic recession or depression caused by the emergency, like a hurricane, as opposed to just an economic issue. So we're all going to see where demand goes. And finally, Oscar DeHaro has some exciting news that he'd like to share.
Thank you, David Craft. It's actually last week, Thursday, was Napa College received some very great news, some great news, almost nearly $3 million worth of great news. And, but I'm going to let Robin D'Arcangelo, our Senior Dean of Student Affairs, share some of the details very briefly, because it was her role, it was her that orchestrated and coordinated the team that wrote the grant that she's about to share with you. But also want to make a note that Robin's been with us for less than a year. And in that time, that short timeframe, she's already pulled in a pretty big fish for Napa College. So with that, Robin?
You're on mute, Robin.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. And thank you, Oscar. To begin, I would like to start out by thanking the board, Dr. Kraft and Oscar for the opportunity to provide this grant update. The designation of NBC as a Hispanic-serving institution, currently over 45% Hispanic student populations allowed Napa Valley College to apply for this grant to provide access to success for all students, but in particular with Latinx and low-income students. The federal grant is a Title V HSI grant, and it's a research and development discretionary grant from the U.S. Department of Ed. Several hundred colleges and universities applied for this grant. However, only a handful of California community colleges were awarded. In the process, I solicited my colleague, Dr. Victoria Heinz, she's a retired VPSS from West Valley College, to assist with the effort. And I collaborated and solicited input across campus with various departments and people, namely Oscar, myself, Project Rise Counseling, College Research, Library, IT, Mesa, Mesa Programs, Facilities, and several faculty and administrators. Dr. Heinz's grant writing skills generated a perfect score, 110 maximum points from three independent readers. And the selection criteria also including preference priorities, so the bonus points that require evidence-based research, which we received perfect scores for the research as well. So I'm happy to announce that NBC received this grant. The term of the grant is October, begins October 2020 through September 25 for a total of $2.9 million throughout a five-year term. The project is titled Camino al Exoto, basically pathways to success, but will be translated to roadmap to success. And I want to give a shout out to Oscar for naming this grant. And some of the activities included in the proposal included a student ambassador program, excuse me, program for peer-to-peer assistance navigating the college enrollment process and experience, a first-year experience project, a STEM-focused activity segment and academic guidance, for example. There's no district match required for this grant, and I will be supervising and overseeing the grant. And I will also have an advisory committee to assist with the assuring that the discretion of the grant is followed. So Napa Valley College has been successful in obtaining three federal HSI grants since becoming a Hispanic-serving institution since, excuse me, 2008. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Big shout-outs, thank you, Oscar.
Yes. May I just mention something? This is awesome. This is great news. Congratulations to both of you. I attended the Hispanic Association of Communities and Colleges Conference in Chicago some months back, and that is extremely competitive. Even private universities have applied for those funds. So, oh my God, this is very exciting. Congratulations. Thank you for all, thank you for all that.
Thank you.
It is. The emails really blew up when we got that news last week. Finally, Charo is going to present an equity piece tonight, hiring. And this came from a conversation that the board had, and she's worked on a presentation and we'll share that now.
Catherine, would you mind if I share my screen? Oh, great, you have it already. Okay, I can share. Well, good evening to everyone. What I want to say from the start is I have attended so many different forums, dialogues, been a part of many different conversations throughout the system. And one thing is clear, there is a push to increase diversity in our faculty and staff to serve our students. Based on the requests by you all, my honorable trustees, as well as the need to share what Napa Valley College is actually doing in our recruitment processes to meet that call. So first of all, it's important to know that we are an EEO employer. So what does that mean? That means that we do recognize diversity and we understand that we, as a higher educational institution, our charge as a state of before is to create a faculty and staff that is reflective of our student base. Per Title V, and I have to say from personal experience, creating this richly diverse workforce is an ongoing process. So one of the things that I keep hearing is we got to do it, we got to do it now. There's a lot of different steps involved within the recruitment process, but what I can say about now...
You're freezing a little bit, Charo.
Already having a really good recruit, I'm sorry. How am I now? Okay. It's, okay. So coming into Napa Valley College, we have a really good foundation for recruiting. And so it was very easy for me to come in and pick up and make some adjustments to increase those efforts to diversify our applicant pools. One of the, the area that guides all of our steps in HR, serving the district, is Title V EEO, state and federal requirements, the Chancellor's Office Minimum Qualification Guidelines and for faculty hiring, and the Multiple Method Guidelines and Legal Direction also set forth by the Chancellor's Office. So what is our ultimate goal? We strive to create a diverse applicant pool. Now, we do not do any preferential hiring, meaning we don't look at ethnicity and gender and say, we are going to hire you based on your ethnicity or gender. Our job is to create a diverse applicant pool that will increase the chances of us diversifying our faculty and staff. At the end of the day, what are we looking for? We're looking for the best qualified candidate to serve our students. That starts with our job descriptions and job posting. The job description, of course, tells the employee what it is they're going to do. The job posting is our advertisement to entice individuals to apply for our jobs. So we do look at our qualifications to making sure that as we are setting minimum qualifications, we're not setting the bar too high. If we set the bar too high, then we reduce the ability to diverse our applicant pools. And that includes looking at our desirables and making sure that they're reasonable and we know exactly the type of applicant we're trying to seek. Also, we are required to include a diversity statement in both academic and staff positions. And so in order for us to be able to screen for the understanding of who we are looking for these applicants to serve, we included also in our screening process as well as our interview process. Our hiring committee is trained per Title V. We do train our hiring committee on legal compliance, our commitment to Title V state and federal non-discrimination laws, the benefits of a diverse workforce, elimination of bias, and also committee best practices. We do diversify our hiring committees. If we see that our hiring committee is a homogenous group, we do reach out to our constituencies asking for additional volunteers to diversify our hiring committees. And we also have EEO reps, equal employment opportunity representatives on each committee. Their role in each committee is to help me, because I can't attend every single hiring committee meeting, but to help me to identify bias, stop it in its tracks, and also to keep the committee on track of following state, federal laws, as well as our own policies and procedures. And also we go over our recruitment methods. One of the things that we have been doing differently is our outreach, our actual recruitment. And so before we did contract with an ad agency, but we've expanded that. We now do, all of our recruitments are advertised nationwide. We also do strategic sourcing. What that means is some of our best candidates come from those who are not looking for jobs or may not have seen our jobs. And so we have ways of doing strategic sourcing to reach out to those passive candidates. We are attending numerous job fairs, numerous job fairs, and this is just assembling of the job fairs that we have attended, including the creation of our own job fair. For two years straight, we held our own NBC Employment Information Fair, because we were trying to, understanding that our property value, the how we're centered, there's a lot of obstacles for some people just to say yes to employment to Napa Valley College. And we understood long time ago that there may be some interest from Napa Unified and surrounding employers who may be interested in coming to the college to provide service to our students. So for two years straight, we offered an Employment Information Fair on our campus. But additionally to that, we attend our CCC Registry Job Fairs, which are extremely important for us to attend, as well as important for us to develop those diverse applicant pools, particularly for our faculty hiring. Those job fairs are always held in January, which is the traditional popular time for hiring faculty. And we attend diversity fairs as well as job fairs at Travis Air Force Base. Our applicant pool review, so once we get close to our positions closing online, I review all applicant pools and I look up, I look at the makeup of each applicant pool. What I'm looking for is to see based on the discipline or based on the job family, do we have diversity represented in our applicant pool? If I don't see that there is a significant level of diversity, we will extend the timeline to post the position. This allows us to restrategize, advertise in different places, do additional sourcing to diversify our applicant pools. So that's another stopgap in looking at our pools and efforts to diversify. So some things that we've done in the past five years, we purchased the applicant tracking system, that's our NeoGov system, and I have to thank the board for approving that way before I joined Napa Valley College. This applicant tracking system produces those EEO reports that I review. We now have a recruiter that is housed in Human Resources. And that recruiter, as well as the previous recruiter that we had before, they have both completed the ARIS Diversity and Inclusivity Recruiter Certification. That teaches them how to diversify our applicant pools, particularly in the area of our academic hires. We do strategic sourcing. And so again, that's utilizing the internet as well as networks. And sometimes that's employing the assistance of outside vendors and tapping into other networks to find that special candidate or special candidates to apply for positions. As I stated before, we had our own in-house job fair. We now, the minimum qualifications for faculty is reviewed in Human Resources. And this is important because this allows us to quickly identify the faculty applicants that requires equivalency and get them through the process so that we don't lose candidates. We're also analyzing our longitudinal data. So we're looking at in Napa County, in Alameda County, in Solano County, what is our availability? So we're looking at in Napa County, in Alameda County, in Solano County, what is our availability for candidates and how are we doing versus what is available of talent in our area? And we also now have the EEO Advisory Council, which is a sub-council from our EEO Equity Inclusivity Committee. So our next steps is, when I bring this topic back, I will be bringing it back with a further discussion into data represented in our EEO plan and asking for an approval to approve another three-year EEO plan. We're working on strengthening our outreach to adjunct faculty, as well as updating the NeoGov system, one of the things we're excited about, but we have not implemented because it's pending discussion with our constituencies. We do have the ability, we can flip the switch immediately, to mask applicant identification through the system. So that means that if we get agreement from our constituencies and require a change in process, then our committees would not see any names or any identifiers. It's not foolproof, because when you have internal candidates, you can kind of figure out who is applying. But for the majority of our applications, they will be completely masked. And so the only thing the hiring committee member would see is an applicant ID. So hopefully, we'll get some success with that, and I can bring that back for further information as well. And lastly, finding efficiencies in the recruitment process to shorten the timeline. I think in the past four years, we've made considerable improvements in shortening the recruitment process, and we still have work to do. And so we're working on that as well. And thank you so much for spending the past 10 minutes listening to me, and thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Charles. I mean, you can feel this all is under that umbrella, and thank you for your patience on this. We decided rather than to do, spread this out over months, we would really get at some of your requests in one 52-minute period. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Charles. I think that's great. And, you know, it's unfortunate... Well, anyway, thank you for all you do, and we're getting there. Thank you.
Wonderful presentation.
Okay. So we are on number eight, Consent Calendar. Does anybody have anything to pull out from the calendar?
Move approved as presented.
A second?
Second trustee Dodd.
Moved by trustee Baldini, second by trustee Dodd. And so we're approved by consent. Thank you very much for all that.
I'm sorry, trustee Sikora, you cannot do the consent calendar by consent. You will need to go through the votes.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Was trustee Iverson able to connect with us?
He was not. He still has not been able to connect, I'm sorry.
Okay. And so that's an aye for me as well, and so we have one absent vote. Thank you. And we go to number nine, Academic Affairs Information Discussion Act and Action Item, 9.1, recognition of newly tenured faculty.
Again, it is a pleasure for me to get to play a part in the celebration of these faculty members for their achieving tenure at Napa Valley College. And I know in the short time that they've been here, they have made significant contributions in their own area of expertise and to the college community. The administrators over the disciplines are each going to speak briefly about these amazing faculty members, and now we have their photos up there for you as well, so we can go to the first one. And this will be presented by Dean Bob Vanderbilt.
Thank you, Dr. Parker, members of the board, Dr. Kraft. Thank you for my annual opportunity to highlight tenure and to introduce you to newly tenured member of the faculty. I think at this point, we used to have cake. But even without cake, tenure is an important step in one's professional career in the academy. It's not a job for life, but additional new process, and it's not automatic. It is earned only after a rigorous review by peers and administrators. You might think that tenure is not important to the sciences, but in this era of climate change deniers and virus conspiracy theorists, it remains an important guarantor of academic freedom. Tenure is our official statement to the faculty member that they are a valued part of the college and we want them to stay. Tenured faculty members put down roots. They buy houses in our community, they become more fully engaged in the lives of our students and more engaged in the life of the college. Dr. Josh Hansen is a perfect example. Coming to us after earning his PhD in chemistry from UC Davis, he is a gifted instructor who has been an active part of the college community. His colleagues recognize his leadership, selecting him to serve as a just-in-time as co-chair of the Technology Committee, and that has certainly been vital to all of us in these days. Students regularly flock to his courses, filling them in the first days of registration. I'm a lawyer, not a scientist, but I've seen Dr. Hansen in action. If he can explain chemistry so that I can understand it, he is clearly an outstanding instructor. It's my honor to present Dr. Josh Hansen, and I want to note also that his chemistry colleagues are here, or in one case was here, to cheer him on. So congratulations, Josh, on your recognition, and Forrest is back with the visitor.
Thanks, Bob. I really appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
So much, and we have Charlie Monahan. Dean Charlie Monahan is going to present the next two newly tenured faculty members.
Mr. Dr. Kraft and Board of Trustees. Stan Hitchcock began his journey here at Napa Valley College, achieving his AS in 1989. He completed his bachelor's degree at USF in organizational behavior. And then Stan was the maintenance general supervisor for Napa Pipe for more than nine years before moving to Cal Marathon, while working and teaching for almost 14 years. So Stan joined Napa Valley College in 2016. And there's just two anecdotes I'd like to share with you. When we would take high school and adult school tourists through his program, he would emphatically praise their decision to have been born in this specific time. And he did that, they kind of took it back, like, "What do you mean? Where are you going with this?" And then he said, "You know, you've been born in this specific time because there's huge opportunities to grasp in this program." And they took him aback, and I think it's a great, great thing. And then he also said, one thing that shows his love for machine tool technology is, he says he loves to be working with his head while also working with his hands. I love, it's a beautiful image. So I'm so happy to see Stan get this point, this career.
Well, thank you, Charlie. I appreciate the kind words if I can butt in here. And I just want to say thank you to Napa Valley College for providing me with this rare opportunity where I can use my knowledge, skills, education, and experience and pass that along to a new generation. It's a very, very... It's a rare opportunity to do that, and I'm appreciative of that every day. Thank you again.
So you saw Molly a little bit in the video for the viticulture program. Molly attended Cornell University, and she's a bachelor's in biology. In 2002, she studied viticulture and horticulture at UC Davis and left with a master's of science in 2005. And before she came to Napa Valley College, she worked at Staggsley and Shahealan Winery in Oregon as a viticulturist. So Molly joined us as faculty in 2016 and teaches general viticulture, vineyard operations, plining soils, in addition to running the teaching vineyard. And Molly is really passionate about teaching and bringing this total experience, you know, viticulture, winemaking, and wine marketing to our students.
Oh, yeah, way to go.
Wonderful. Okay, thanks so much, Charlie. Dean Bob Harris will present the two nursing faculty members.
Yes, good evening, board, and everyone in attendance. My pleasure to introduce Kathryn Ratliff. We know her better as Katie. Katie started as an adjunct instructor for us as a clinical instructor, and she has a myriad experience in nursing. She began her career in the Air Force, I believe, and served and worked her way up. She has worked in hospice. She has a background that is rich and broad in scope. Katie has been requested several times by the nursing students to speak during their penning ceremony, and that speaks volumes because of the way she works and treats the students. She's known as a passionate instructor, somebody who's very... understands what the students have gone through. She hasn't forgotten what it's like to be a student, and she's been a pleasure to work with. She is one... She has received multiple certifications to teach in various areas in nursing. I'm not sure if you folks, if people know that there are five domains in nursing, mental health, OB, med surg, et cetera. And Katie's taken upon herself to gain board approval to teach in many, four, five of those areas. So she's very versatile. She is a team player. She's not one to go out and to her own horn, so to speak. But if there's something that needs to be done, Katie gets it done, and she does it without fanfare, and the students, they respect her and they love her. So it's my pleasure to introduce Katie Ratliff. Congratulations, Katie. Okay, I will continue on my path. This is Andrea Rival. I think Andrea is with us this evening. Andrea is in the middle. Andrea came to us four years ago as she is an instructor in the Health Occupation Skills Lab. Andy is a graduate of PUC with a bachelor's degree, and she's an alum of our nursing program. She's been a registered nurse over at Snow Developmental Center. And when the position here came open, when our previous instructor retired, Andy applied, came in, and I will say, Andy, if you can hear this, and I think Dr. Kraft was on the second interview with us, it was one of the most unique interviews that I will remember. And... But, yeah, she's here. But Andy is a person who... She is an advocate for the students, and when the students are having... Need to work on a specific skill, their primary clinical instructor will send them to Andy to hone up on the skill so they can pass a test or just become proficient in whatever that skill may be. Andy is there all the time for the students. She's very active in the simulation center. And she has also taken upon herself to gain additional certifications, and she can also instruct in the psych tech program and may be looking to become a full-time instructor in the ADN program. Right now, she is a go-to. She is also sort of the... She has a very comfortable chair in her office and snacks for the students and is one who is an ear. She spends a lot of time listening to the students, because she is a person who is not directly giving them a grade, but has a very strong influence, and how they will become proficient. So it's been a pleasure so far to work with Andy. I'm pleased to recognize her, and it's a wonderful achievement that she has received tenure. And Andy, we're pleased that you're part of the team. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. I'm honored, and that was a very interesting interview.
What are the details on this? Come on.
So I think, I won't speak for Andy, but I think that might be best described in a one-on-one in her office or in another offices, so she could describe it herself. It was a fabulous interview, but it was...
Yeah, it was heartfelt. Let's just say that. It was a heartfelt interview.
Congratulations, Andy.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more presentation by Dean Howard Willis.
Good evening, board. I am very honored to introduce Hope Tiffany Hope Scott. Hope is the first and very proud, first woman in her family to attend college. She began her educational career as a community college student with career interests in the fields of education and psychology. She transferred to San Francisco State University, where she earned her Bachelor's of Art degree in liberal studies, and later earned a master's degree in counseling psychology from John F. Kennedy University. Prior to joining us at MVC, she was a faculty, she was an adjunct faculty member, as well as a general counselor in 2014. She spent six years volunteering, working at various community agencies and public schools, where she provided therapy to children, adolescents, and adults. She's extremely grateful to have found her ideal career as a counselor and instructor at Napa Valley College. Hope, in her time here, has taken on leadership roles. Even as an adjunct, she was the coordinator of the human services program, and now she's the current counseling coordinator for the division, the department. One thing that she believes is that education is one of the most powerful ways to challenge systems of oppression, learn compassion, and empathy for others, and nurture community and interconnectiveness in the world around us. I'm very, very honored, as well as everyone in the department and the division, that Hope Scott has received tenure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the deans for presenting the wonderful cohort, to the professors. I'm so glad that you're here. I look forward to working with you for many years, and congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to all of you, and thank you for that wonderful presentation.
We're gonna have a giant cake someday, right?
Yes.
Like a six-month worth of cake.
So we're on number 10 on the agenda, Administrative Services Information Discussion Action Items, 10.1, Facility Services Department Overview. Mr. Christensen?
Good evening, everyone. How are we doing?
So far, so good. How about you?
Just wonderful. What a wonderful show that I've been watching so far. Again, I'd like to give just a brief overview of the Facility Service Department. I can go on to the next slide there. As part of the annual planning and budget process, budget development values and assumptions are put forward each year and presented to the board during that budget cycle. And one of the key components that I want to reiterate is, is that Napa Valley Community College will ensure that appropriate resources are directed towards meeting the requirements to maintain the operations and maintenance of the campus, as well as the technology infrastructure. And also, there's some stipulation there that we'll do what we can to move forward the facilities master plan and the technology plan. And that's something that, again, that the Budget and Planning Committee, or Planning and Budget Committee, depending on which side you're looking at it... and Budget Committee, depending on which side you're looking at it, take a look at that every year to make sure that the budget addresses those things as, as they can. The next thing I want to share is just a little bit of an overview of the organization chart for the department. Facility Services Department has evolved in the years that I've been here. When I first came to the college, it was called Maintenance and Operations. And, you know, with the times, it's changed and evolved. Some of the titles have changed, but overall, all of the responsibilities that have been in the department have been pretty consistent, as well as the number of, the number of positions. We've seen the custodian numbers increase slightly over the years as we added additional square footage with the previous bond implementation. Generally, the, the budget for the Facilities Department, if you want to scroll down one more there, the Facility Services expenditures, this is from last fiscal year, so 2019, 2020. You get a general idea there of, of the categories of the budget, the way it's broken out. One thing I want to make sure that everyone understands that, in a Facilities Department or Maintenance Department, a lot of the resources are people. So you can see that of our almost $3.8 million in the Facility Services expenditures, $2.2 million is salary and benefit. So, so over half of it is related to, to the human resources that we have in the department that are, that are critical for our success to help serve students. I'd like to just kind of run through some of the different areas of the, of the Facilities Department, if you want to scroll down. So, as an overview, a few years ago, we put in a new work order system using, at the time it was school due, now it's called facilities due. Again, everything evolves and gets more complex, I guess. And on average, we have approximately 1,300 work orders, requests that are submitted to the department, and those cover groundskeeping, custodial, all of the maintenance trades, and they might even be related to delivery and furniture setups and event coordination and things. As a whole, we have a few people in the department that do some safety inspections. We do safety inspections throughout campus, as well as our off-site, where we might have community education programs going on. We're responsible for building management controls, so that's lighting, HVAC, climate controls, door access, a lot of different things related to that, sustainability, energy management, try to do what we can to manage our utility costs. And then with utility management, it goes beyond just the PG&E kind of concept, because we're talking, you know, garbage service, recycling, reclaimed water, gasoline purchases, the, the water bill. All of those things all fall under utility management, and we're trying to keep a handle on all of those things at the same time. As I mentioned, door access, we're the keepers of the keys, if you will, and so we manage the key system for all of the employees and staff on campus. One of the things that we also play a pretty significant role for the colleges is we're in agency contact and do a lot of coordination with agencies that a lot of times people don't think of, you know, they're, they're behind the scenes, but it's the obvious ones like the city, the county, the fire department, the water department. But then we also do work with the Water Resources Board, mosquito abatement, Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So there's a lot of other agencies and coordination that we do as a department. Move on to the next one. Then to break it down a little bit further, groundskeepers. It's, it's fairly straightforward what the groundskeepers do. But again, at this, at this point in time, we've got approximately 149 acres on campus. Forty-nine acres are fully developed. We have a lot of acreage that is less than fully developed, as we know, around the edges, but they still require some weed abatement and things. So the groundskeepers, as part of their daily routine, they're checking exterior walkways, stairs and ramps for trip and fall, removing leaves, those kinds of things, checking on parking lot, irrigation repairs, mowing lawns, planting areas. They provide a tremendous amount of athletic field maintenance and support for our outdoor classrooms as well, and they provide weed abatement and right-of-way spraying and weed removal along the roadways and things, and that's, again, is related to pest management. And then one of the things that they will be actively pursuing very soon will be breaking leaves and cleaning gutters and roof drains and things, so that we avoid building damage and situations on campus. The custodial folks are front and center right now with what's going on in the world around us, so they play a key role in helping to make the college safe for those staff and faculty and students that are on campus, as well as an increasing number of visitors. So the custodians are doing daily cleaning of classrooms and lab spaces, and also the public and common areas, entrances, restrooms, locker rooms, food prep areas. They are the front line for recycling and composting as well throughout campus, again, trying to help us achieve some of the sustainability goals that we have as a district, and that we want to instill that same concept with our, with our students as well. They do annual project cleaning. Given the, the most recent situation, they've had a fair amount of time to refinish floors and clean carpets and do those kinds of things around campus. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the amount of furniture moving and event setup and coordination that the custodians do. It's, it's a tremendous amount of time. Rare is the day, although I will say, the most recent months excluded, rare is the day that we don't have two to five events of some kind going on campus. So it might be two tables in front of the LLRC, and a full setup in the community room, and something going on in the Student Activity Center, and then those tables need to be moved back and forth on campus, as well as cleanup afterwards. So the custodians have to do a lot of that extra support, and they're front and center, even when you often think of them being behind the scenes. The next group, the, the mechanics, have a very broad range of things, and one thing I want to point out here is, they've actually, we have successfully installed the five bottle filling stations around campus. So there, there is one, and I think that picture is actually from the 1500 Building, that if you guys were needing onsite, you would, you would be able to see it there. The mechanics do all the locks and door and door hardware repairs, electrical lighting, they help and work with IT related to data cabling and things, plumbing, HVAC, carpentry, the list goes on. One of the significant things that they do is swimming pool operation, and in that picture, you can see those are actually the swimming pool filters that were replaced using some state money and some, our capital improvement budget. Down at the swimming pool, we replaced those over the last holiday break. Something that you should do every 15 years, and we were lucky enough to get it done in about 20, but it happened, so there you go. The next group, Warehouse Mailroom and their responsibilities. So we're the central point for mail and parcel delivery on campus. The print shop is actually located in, in the warehouse building as well. So the folks in the warehouse deliver the mail throughout campus, collect the mail, bring it back, redeliver it, get it sent out with a postage meter. They deliver printing on campus when, when instruction is being held on campus. They deliver copy paper throughout the campus as well. Again, they do have a lot of support and, and help a lot of folks on campus, whether it's furniture assembly, delivery, moving, and again, the events support and setup is a key component. The other thing that the folks in the warehouse do, they're responsible for hazardous material response and management as well, because they're the central point of receiving, so they make sure that hazardous materials are labeled appropriately, and they also help with the disposal at the end of life. Facility Reservations is one of the key components that, that operates out of the Facility Services Office as well. So we're involved with all of the non-instructional use of space on campus. So anybody from the outside or from the in-house campus users that are not instruction-based, so it could be a committee meeting, or it could be a student club, those kind of activities, because they're not in the classroom and they're not directly instruction, they're considered an outside user at that point, or, or non-instructional. So we coordinate the setup and support with college police, IT, media services, those kinds of things. Sometimes it's a cafe, perhaps for a, a, a food service event. Right now, and this is true of last year, even with the abbreviated, abbreviated year, we have approximately 120 distinct outside user groups annually, and we have 110 distinct non-instruction users that are on our campus. So again, that's the clubs, it's the committees, it's the different groups that are doing events on campus. And we are trying to have those as much as we can to help support the, the community, given the situation we're in. Some of the, some of the food dispersal activities happen here on campus. We've also had a couple of blood drives, and we're going to have another one coming up. So there, those kinds of things, we're still trying to do as much as we can to help support things, even though that we have challenging times. One thing that I do want to point out is, is that, as always, when you have a, a, a department of this size, you can imagine that you always have a, a few vacancies. We've had an ongoing vacancy in the groundskeeper area that we've been working to fill for a period of time. We had it filled for a short time and, and, but we, again, we continue to work with that. We've got a couple of custodian vacancies. We have a mail and facilities, excuse me, facilities assistant vacancy, and a building mechanic vacancy as an electrician. Given our current situation with where we are, we're holding off on those, on those vacancies, but again, when you start looking at the list of things that we do, and you have one HVAC mechanic and one carpenter and one plumber, you, you start to see that everybody's helping everybody to achieve our goals, and, and I think that's an important thing to say, is everybody is a team player. I mentioned before the Facilities Master Plan, a piece of things, if you go to the next page, one of the things that I believe that I, I did a little bit of a snapshot months ago related to the space utilization work that we were working on in the Facilities Department. And in essence, it was a way that we were hoping that we could achieve some of the goals that we've set out for in the last iteration of the Facilities Master Plan, short of capital improvement money from some external source. And we still hope that we can move forward with that. But as we face the challenging times that we're, we're in right now, we need to make sure that we're, we make sound budget decisions as it relates to some of the capital improvements that, that we have out there. But one of the things that I did want to mention is, is that we recognize that we have some challenges in our hardscape area down the middle of the mall of the campus. It was originally on one of the items that was at the tail end of our last capital improvement bond that we hoped that we could get to, and we weren't able to realize that improvement. It still is in our Facilities Master Plan, and we still recognize that there's a need for that. One of the things that we're hoping with the space utilization, we have some concepts in there that we want to continue to develop, and we had originally had them in hopes for them to be in this next, what we're in our current year's budget now at this point in time. But again, we have to be able to adapt to the challenges that we face. So we're continuing to restart some of those conversations on how that might look, and one of the things that I have represented here and I have on the list as well is, is the Bear Fountain. That's a, that's a space that we're hoping that we can revitalize up around the, the quad area as it relates to the student services area, academic services, and really kind of revitalize some of that space and reimagine it. We still hope that we can do that as we move forward. If nothing else, we can continue to have those discussions and the plans as we move further into the fall semester and certainly into the spring semester. One thing that I do want to highlight is, is the 3100 Building, Industrial Technology Machine Tool Welding. We, we are receiving state funds this year to do the design drawings and construction documents, so that we can move forward. We hope then we'll get the additional funding the next year to complete that modernization project. So I'll be working with Eric Wade and Stan, who you guys all recognized a short time ago, to help make those plans become a reality, so that we can move forward there. I also want to point out, lastly, the EV, EV charging stations. We have a rare opportunity, MCE, Marin Clean Energy is going to be celebrating their 10-year anniversary, and as part of that, they are offering the college an opportunity to, to partner with them to expand some charging stations on campus. Four of them would be on MCE's dime, if you will, and then they will help us with some additional ones. So they're actually going to be moving that forward. Bob Parker and I have had some conversations related to that, and we're starting the paperwork process, so that we can add some additional charging stations on campus, which I think are, are going to be, obviously are, are needed, and they're a component that's in the Facilities Master Plan. So we're doing whatever we can to try to achieve those things in the, in the odd times that we're living in now. So that's the end of my presentation. I realize I talked probably way longer than anybody wanted to hear, but if anybody has any, any questions, I, I would be happy to answer those.
I have a quick question, and specifically talking about the, you know, the pathway down the middle of campus, and I, I haven't been on it in some time now, but I had seen some conditions that seemed like safety issues to me, and just wondering if those things are being fixed at least.
Yes, we, we do have plans for that, that, we have some challenges in the asphalt area because of tree roots. The hardscape, we are, we will be bringing out a company that we've had out on campus before, where they do some horizontal saw cutting. And two years ago, we had it done throughout campus, and, and they had over 220 points in the, in the concrete walkways that they trimmed, if you will. So we have safety credit money that, that can go towards that. We have also done some pretty significant asphalt repairs in the past using that money. So those are things that we're going to be looking at as we go into the fall to address those things. So thank you for pointing that out. We will do what we can to address the safety issues.
Good, thank you.
Any more questions?
I just had a quick comment. If anybody's here is a Blade Runner fan, your picture of your pool filters on slide number eight made me think of electric sheep.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you very much. That was, that was a very good presentation.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for all you do. So we're to 10.2, update on the Upper Valley campus. We do have two public comments on this item. I know that, that one of the letters we all received that, you fellow trustees, would you like me to read it, or are you happy? Well, anyway.
There's no, I don't believe there's any need to read the letters at all. They're, they're posted on the website, hopefully everyone, unless anyone hasn't reviewed them.
Does anybody else is interested in hearing what those letters said, or you can go to, to Board Box and check those out, and, you know, the comments as to, general comments about the forum that we had, and of course, it's from people from the past. So I would urge you or suggest that you go to Board Box and, and check out those attachments. Thank you for that, trustee Dodd. And Mr. Parker, would you like to provide an update, if you could, please?
Yes, certainly. I think actually it's going to be both of the Parkers tonight.
I think actually it's going to be both of the Parkers tonight. And I'll ask Dr. Parker to start off with talking about what's happening at the Upper Valley campus and what the plans are from the Office of Academic Affairs.
Great, I didn't know I was going to get to go first, but I'm excited to share some highlights around the ongoing community engagement that's taken place since the community forum, to also share some highlights around culinary curriculum redesign that's underway and about the continuation, despite the pandemic, of current community and non-credit educational offerings. So let's see, let me begin with the community engagement piece. It's really exciting. The Upper Valley Campus Director, Chantel Rigel, has been actively connecting with local organizations, past, current, and potential partners in order to learn more about the role that Upper Valley Campus plays in the community and to brainstorm about ideas going forward. I'm going to just choose some of the common themes, just share those interest in continuing to provide programming in healthy living, gardening, entrepreneurship, agriculture, and hospitality. Some new ideas such as translation services opportunities, family childcare, independent contracting businesses, social justice, child development and parenting classes. And then also brainstorming ideas for creative use of spaces to support community events and expanding educational programming. We also know that there's unmet demand for ESL classes and we're actively planning around opportunities to increase offerings in the future. With regard to plans in the works to grow hospitality, culinary, and tourism management, the academic program, and offering this as a credit program to make it more affordable and accessible to students, let me share that we currently offer three certificates and one AS degree in hospitality management. And there are new, there's a new curriculum in the pipeline to increase that to an advanced culinary skills certificate and to develop an AA in culinary arts and hospitality. And these have an estimated launch date of fall '21. And one of the most exciting components of these new curricular pieces are our work experience classes that would actually integrate and engage with activity on the Upper Valley Campus. Finally, I'm proud to say that the community education staff were able to super quickly adapt to COVID. And there is a schedule of classes that maintains the Food and Wine Enthusiast Program this fall online. There's a focus on writing arts and crafts and personal growth opportunities. And last but not least, community education has written and planned a community outreach survey that will be shared widely in both English and Spanish to gauge future local community education offering interests. So I think that I will now turn it back over to my colleague, Bob Parker, for his piece.
Well, thank you, Dr. S. Parker. Now, Dr. B. Parker.
You're on. So, didn't mean to put Sarah on the spot, but the, I think my intention in having her go first is to say that all of those great things that she just talked about and all of the plans for the Upper Valley Campus, what I'm about to talk about doesn't in any way take away from all of those activities. And what I'm talking about is what was announced in the joint statement that was released on September 4th, the joint statement between Napa Valley College and the City of St. Helena. And that is the fact that we are entering into negotiations with the City of St. Helena for possibly leasing a piece of the Upper Valley Campus to the City of St. Helena. Leasing to the City of St. Helena would not, as I say, in any way stop us or hinder our ability to continue to offer the programs, the classes, the services at the Upper Valley Campus that the new director of the Upper Valley Campus, Chantel Rigel, is working on, as well as the things that came out at that community forum that we had and the feedback that we got from the community on what they valued about the Upper Valley Campus. And so as I say, we are talking to the City of St. Helena to look into the City of St. Helena leasing a piece of the Upper Valley Campus. And that's a, what is a three-step process. So we are currently negotiating. We discussed the letter of intent with the board. That's at tonight's board meeting. At our October board meeting, the next step in the process, assuming an agreement is reached in principle, at the October board meeting, the district or the board would pass a resolution of intent to lease property to the City of St. Helena. When that happens, when that resolution is passed, that triggers a requirement that we notice the public and publish at least three times over a three-week period. So for three consecutive weeks, we publish this intention, resolution of intent to lease property to the City of St. Helena. At the end of that period, at our November board meeting, if all goes as we expect, at the November board meeting, there would be a resolution approving the lease and authorizing, executing the documents and taking all actions necessary to finalize that transaction. So those are the steps that we will be going through over the next two months to move forward with working with the City of St. Helena on that potential lease of a piece of the Upper Valley Campus. And so that is, I believe, our update on the Upper Valley Campus. Be happy to answer any questions. No questions about what Sarah presented, I can't answer those. But be happy to answer any questions about the process.
I'd just like to make a comment, no question, but just also somewhat responding to some of the public comment that we received, which I think was very helpful and instructive and always appreciate people participating in the public process and people that are interested and passionate about the college. We're so better off for that and their efforts and dedication to the college and over the past decades was a lot of where those letters come from. But Bob, I think you really spoke very well, spoke to it very well that, you know, these new educational programs and partnerships that Chantel is really trying to be very thoughtful of and considering what does the Upper Valley Campus look like in the future. That's still happening. And this potential lease with the City of St. Helena, it's very much potential right now. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. They're not mutually exclusive by any means. So I think we can still go ahead and move and be thoughtful about those educational programs and partnerships in addition to considering on this lease, especially I think as the board acknowledged two, perhaps three months ago, is, you know, we're right now in the middle of pandemic where we're not really serving students in the classroom except for, you know, maybe 10% of students within a specific, learning a specific set of skills that really don't apply to the Upper Valley Campus in terms of their normal programming. So I think this is really just a unique time. And I think the college and Dr. Kraft and the administration are being very thoughtful about how they're moving forward. So I just wanted to say, express my appreciation for that and the hard work. And just really, I think, this is just the really best, greatest use of resources, not only for the students, but the taxpayers as well.
Your dear. Any more comments? Thank you, thank you both of you. That was, that was good stuff. 11, human resources information discussion action item. 12, student affairs information discussion action items. 12.1, addendum to memorandum of understanding with Mentis and Napa Valley College. We recommend this, we are recommending that we approve this. It's an added expense of $17,500 for Mentis for an extra day of service at the college for mental health. So can I have an motion, please?
Leave approval.
Second.
I'm sorry, who moved to approve?
Jennifer Baker.
Okay, because she was coming and going. So moved approval by trustee Baker, second by trustee Rios. Here, I need to go through my list. Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Mute.
Sorry, I'm muted, excuse me.
Trustee Goff. Trustee Goff. Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
And that's a my for me as well. So trustee Goff, you're muted.
Actually, I was unmuted. I think I'm having internet issues. I said aye.
Okay, so good thing that trustee Iverson is not here because he would have had to recuse himself. 13, general information discussion action items. 13.1, Mount Veder timeline and planning. Dr. Graff.
Thank you. I'm going to turn, it's the Bob Show tonight. We can both take a look at this. If you'll open this up, we can take a look at this together. It really is a kind of an update. And Bob, forgive me because I've forgotten whether we are tag teaming or I'm doing it. But I'll just start. This is our Mount Veder property, which the college has controlled and, you know, owned for decades. This is really a follow-up timeline to several years of planning that have included stops and starts in Mount Veder for various reasons. In terms of, you know, the latest was after we did a remodel of a caretaker's home and finished that up and we had a caretaker there who was improving it. And then a couple of years ago, we had the devastating fires that rolled through that area, so it put us on hold again. Recently, we've had the real property committee visit on August 12th. Matt Christensen has overseen or been supervised, I guess the word, coordinated, a team of people who have been there. I think it was almost a year and a half, Matt, or longer. Forgotten, somewhere in there. And they were, they were a combination, you're just going to have to jump in, Matt, I'm sorry. Tell me about the people that we used and the source of funding.
So the source of funding was some, both federal and state funding for displaced workers.
Yeah.
That were associated with loss of income with the fires. It was overseen by a county program. And it was for over a year, quite a number of employees that went through and received training, job training. The fantastic news beyond the great work that they did on the property is that many of these folks then went on and got jobs with local tree companies based on the skills that they had learned on that program. So to me, that was actually a demonstration of what those programs are for and it actually worked, so that's kind of.
Thank you. Very much a win-win. And as the subcommittee saw and we took some pictures and related, it's very much a cleaned up site. You know, not only beautifully pristine in many ways, but it was a working farm for decades. And so it still kind of serves that purpose. So there are areas where there are former orchards and former planting and then there's a small house. We have buildings there that the college has constructed over the years, including a composted toilet area, a kind of a picnic area. So really what we're wanting to do and we're going to engage, you know, both our here on campus stakeholders and external, is to move to the next step. You know, it was never intended to be held in reserve, if you will. You know, it's for the enjoyment, aesthetic, scientific, and educational of our community and our students. So our goal is really to, in the future, be able to use that site for academic programs, including those things that would jump to mind, environmental studies, biology, botany, leadership in business. There are many other kind of orthogonal pieces there for viticulture, enology, wine, farming, ag, climate surveying, there's engineering. So it is quite open. It also has great opportunities, as we've shared, for leadership and development, for field trips, and also for community use and input. So we're quite excited about moving forward. The next steps, campus conversations, we want to check with our faculty and staff to say, what could you envision that would be great up there from biology? What's that look like for you? And we know we're going to return to students being able to visit. But I would surmise that it is also a visual lab. If we have to do remote, we'll have to figure out a way to stream live stuff from up there. So we're not quite there yet, but it has a lot of possibilities for academic programming. Then we're going to go to a community forum, similar to our Upper Valley Campus forum, invite neighbors, you know, other folks, interested parties to kind of weigh in on best and highest uses. We'll have a real property committee study session following up on your visit. We'll go to the board for the draft of a three-year development pathway plan. We're hoping to work on that in the spring. The board will review and adopt that plan this year in May. There is no sense really booting this, you know, another year or another year. We, I believe, highest and best use, we need to move forward. And then we'll back into a budget that we need to do. We'll be able to do some, my guess is with both public-private grants, we'll be able to do some with federal grants and state grants. There are many that are targeted and just perfect for this option. And our Napa Valley Foundation, our Napa Valley College Foundation has also shown great interest in fundraising for this project as well. And then, in a perfect world, we're launching programming this summer. It would be wonderful to see a group of students on a biological preserve looking at a whole bunch of things that are possible. A new forest growth after a fire is something that is probably part of California's future. And so as we start to expand in forestry and, you know, harbor studies, it could be quite exciting. So that's the update. And Bob, if there's anything that I left out or should be doing, please do that now.
I think that was perfect. Thank you.
Oh gee whiz, I got a perfect, okay, that's good. Thanks, Matt. It's quite exciting, you guys. I mean, you know, I'm rolling into, you know, close to a decade here. Before me, for previous decades, you know, there were attempts made. But I think we finally have some momentum and a vision. And so I'm excited that the subcommittee is really eager to make this happen. And I don't know if you have any comments from the board, but.
I'm happy to see this kind of a plan to create a plan and then execute. I think you're right. I think finally, maybe this is building some momentum. And I think that we can keep that going and really make use of this very valuable, you know, asset, you know, for the students.
Excellent. Yeah, I agree completely with trustee Rios's comments. And so thank you, thank you all for your leadership on that. I have just one comment. You know, I don't know, and I'm just trying to save and trying to make the best use of resources, is the community forum and doing kind of like a Zoom forum similar to what we did with the Upper Valley Campus, is that, I don't, I'm not saying it's inappropriate, there's something inappropriate about it, but the best use of resource. I'm just wondering if you just do that real property committee study session meeting very well, put out a lot of public notice. Because, you know, for instance, you know, one thing that we didn't in that community forum, didn't have a lot of public comment as part of that, but that's that real property committee study session will have that opportunity for the public to comment. And I just, just to say, the Mount Veder campus isn't a prominent focus of the college in a way that the Upper Valley campus is. And so I'm just, in terms of just best use of resources and.
So I'm just, in terms of just the best use of, of resources and, and, and keeping us focused and, and, and driven. Um, just a suggestion.
Thank you. And, and we'll certainly look at that. I mean, the, the Mount Vator appellation and, and the estate wineries up there are um, um, eager to see what we're doing and how it complements. So it, it may be a, a, a different look. Um, yeah, Holly Dawson is kind of working with us, but thank you for that input. I'm, I'm factoring that. We want, we'll want to have some input from. Completely a suggestion. Completely. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This is a little, it is on track, but there is a collegiate mountain biking team sport. So maybe we could uh, explore that as well.
I like it. If we do, if we do a women's sport, our Title IX will be completely met. And um, we can do that. We could do that. Um, love that idea. Thanks, Michael.
Oh, right. Yes.
It's not as out there as far as Jennifer's suggestion, but um, you know, in terms of the pool equipment. But I like it.
Which one?
Just your reflection on the pool equipment's look. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. That was great. Uh, thirteen point two, recommendations by, by, of legislative uh, committee. Trustee Goff?
Yes, I'm gonna speak on that uh, tonight. I, I, I've been particularly quiet. This is my seventh Zoom meeting of the day, so I'm, thank you uh, trustee Dodd for being sensitive about Zoom meetings. I, I greatly appreciate it. Um, we did meet, uh, the legislative committee did meet on Tuesday afternoon. And before I comment on uh, what we propose, I, I think we all have to acknowledge that we are in the midst of one of the most emotionally charged election season that I certainly have, have ever lived through. Um, COVID fires, economy, the world is, is blowing up. So um, I want to remind us of our focus, that as a college board, we are here for the students, what is best for them and how we can uh, make the most of their educational opportunity. So tonight, um, when we considered the positions uh, and discussing them, we decided to table Proposition sixteen, um, because we didn't feel like we knew enough about it. And we really wanted to speak intelligently about it. And I'm, I've been tasked with educating myself further on that proposition. And perhaps using our own in-house HR expert, Shar, who did a fabulous presentation tonight, right up the alley of Prop sixteen. Um, so we want to come back in uh, October and talk to you about that one. Uh, tonight, I'm going to talk about Prop fifteen. And then our wonderful um, uh, information officer, Holly Dawson, is going to give us some information about other issues that we're hoping you will um, support. So Prop fifteen is a, an extremely controversial um, proposition to a certain sector of our community. So um, Catherine, if you could put up this slideshow, which I'm really embarrassed has a typo in it and I apologize um, for that. Um, there's information.
Which one? This one or?
The um, Prop fifteen, just the facts.
Thank you.
Um, I did have Catherine, thank you Catherine for all your help, um, attach some of the information about Prop fifteen. But um, we felt it was really important to get those bullet point items to you. Uh, so go ahead to the next slide. There's a lot of um, misconceptions about what Prop fifteen is. And basically, it closes a loophole that was um, sort of created in nineteen seventy-eight when Prop thirteen was passed, which means for the last fifty years, the largest corporations in California, ten, top ten percent, have not had an increase in property taxes in fifty years. This has shifted the uh, onus of funding schools and parks and a lot of infrastructure in cities to residential property tax. Whenever anybody sells their home, um, we pay property taxes based on the uh, current value of our property. And to me, that sounds right. That's pretty fair. But when you look at a corporation such as Disneyland, who for the past fifty years has not had an increase in any of their property taxes, um, I look at that and think, why am I spending my money on school supplies when we're, we're not funding schools? When we look at the college, Napa Valley College and community colleges as a whole, uh, that's a lot of money. When, you know, I loved um, Matt's presentation on our um, campus and maintenance. And the fact that he was saying, well, we'd like to do this, but you know, we've got to figure out how to do it. We just got a three million dollar grant. That's awesome. But you know what? We should already have that. That, those funds should already be available. So for me, um, Prop fifteen, I'm pretty passionate about it. I think the biggest misconception is that this is a tax increase. It's not. It's not a tax increase. California has the lowest, almost the lowest property tax rate in the country. Um, so it's not raising that tax rate is actually simply over a three-year period saying, hey, largest corporations in California start paying your fair share of property taxes. So that little graph on the slide, you can see the nineteen seventy-eight amount that residential uh, property taxes funded was fifty-five percent. Now we're up to seventy-two percent. So if you go to the next slide, um, Catherine. So what it will do, it will basically increase funding for K-12 schools and community colleges as well as local governments, um, by requiring that commercial and industrial real property, we're not talking about ag, we're not talking about uh, residential, be actually taxed based on their current market value. And you can see the exemption, residential property, agricultural property, and owners of commercial and industrial properties with combined values of three million or less. So again, this is really targeting the chevrons, the Disneyland's, and those companies that enjoy California and making a lot of money in California, but really aren't contributing their fair share to their communities. So Catherine, if you go to the next slide, um, how it benefit us? Community colleges, what they do is they take forty percent of what's collected. And out of that forty percent, eleven percent goes to community colleges. Now, uh, Napa Valley College is only slated, and there's my typo, I apologize, um, to get a little over um, five hundred thousand dollars. Why? Because uh, Prop fifteen taxes that are collected stay in the community in which they are collected. So it doesn't go to Sacramento and Sacramento decides. It literally goes right back to the community um, that it is um, taken from. So to me, that um, really makes sense. And it, and it says a lot about really trying to keep it where um, the business is being run. So you can go to the last slide, go to the next slide, Catherine. Yeah. So here's um, basically what it does. Um, they have these six bullet points that really summarize what it is. Um, I'm not gonna go into the last nine slides. I included them um, for our discussion if we needed it because um, big business is now putting out lots of scare tactics um, to get people to be fearful that if this passes, that all of a sudden, everybody is going to be paying more. And it's simply not true if you look at the logic. One of the claims, for example, is that um, all of a sudden, uh, rents are gonna skyrocket in California. Well, if we really based our rents on property tax collection, we should have some of the lowest rents in the nation. So we're not talking about um, you know, people who are gonna say, oh, my, my property tax went up. Now I'm gonna charge rents that nobody in California can afford. It's just faulty logic. Um, but there are nine actually misconceptions that are out there. So what um, the legislative committee decided to do is to put this in front of you and ask you whether you believe, as a board, we can support a resolution in support of Prop fifteen. Um, we know that this is going to increase the tax, um, the property tax bill to some of our residents in um, the Napa Valley. And we know that the Vittners are against this because there are several of them who have um, uh, assets totaling more than three million dollars. I get it. They're gonna pay more. But I look at them and say, yeah, but for fifty years, you haven't paid your share. So to me, it, it rolls out over three years. To me, I, I, I think we need to ask them to step up to benefit our, our students. Because we all know that if we invest in education, all of a sudden, we don't need all those prisons that we're actually paying more for than the money we put into schools. So that's what we would like you to consider. So are there questions or comments about this before we go to looking at the resolution? If we move.
You want to make a comment?
Absolutely, please.
I just wanted to state that our, our statewide union, both the higher ed union and CTA, the larger K-12 union, are both in support of this and are actually one of the major contributors to this. So they've done a lot of the research and uh, and our union. Uh, our local union has not passed a resolution yet. We did introduce the idea to the union today about the proposition.
Awesome. Thank you, Christie. I appreciate it. Do you have anything that you can maybe add to what I said? Did I miss anything or?
I think you covered it. You covered it very well. Um, you know, a lot of people were worried about the ag portion of it. It's worth noting that the original bill did include ag and then that was pulled out because of the uh, the hesitation that people had as, as a result. So this, you know, back when it was just called Schools and Communities First and didn't have a proposition number yet, a lot of that research was done and a lot of alterations were made in order to protect smaller businesses, but make sure that corporations caught up to what they have been, what they should have been paying for a very long time.
And I actually attended a class on this um, this summer to really find out what was, this was all about. And they seemed very intentional. This is very intentional in saying, we need the top ten percent, the big companies, not the mom and pop vineyards, not that, but the top ten that who have basically worked around the law to, to put their fair share in. And so I, I really liked what I was hearing and I did more research on it and I really think we need to support it.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you again.
I have a comment. This is Michael. So a, a, as a college, as encouraging, uh, diverse and, and being inclusive. Uh, looking through the Prop fifteen, I found that the uh, in double, in double ACP along with um, California Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, California Black Chamber of Commerce, California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, California State National Action Network, United Latinos Vote, and Sacramento Asian Pacific, they were all signers to a letter uh, essentially not in favor of Proposition fifteen because the impact it would have on small minority-owned businesses. Uh, that was, so, so I, I asked, uh, uh, so that is now attached to thirteen to, to uh, another viewpoint from um, uh, minority-owned businesses.
Okay. I, I, um, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Tahara.
Um, we really need to be careful, um, because um, the, again, the, the, the narrative that's out there um, is to scare small businesses into vote, into uniting um, with the corporations. And so I really, um, while I know we are really equity-minded, I wanna um, just say that we've got to be careful, um, because the chamber um, is often, well, I don't have to, I don't have to tell you guys, but the chamber is not always um, on, falls on the side of um, working-class folks. So um, in the spirit of equity-mindedness, um, just because some, because they are um, underrepresented groups um, attached to chamber and so forth, does not always mean that they're representative of working-class issues and certainly education. Thank you.
Thank you for that addition. I will tell you that um, when, when I think about, I'm on the board of the Chamber of Commerce in American Canyon and they um, did not pass a resolution either. And it came down to a lot of the um, businesses that own a lot of the property are basically threatening, saying, well, if this passes, your rent's gonna skyrocket. And my response to that was, if this passes and you're paying your fair share of property taxes and you raise your rents, no one is going to rent from you. They're not gonna be able to afford it. And um, another thing that was, that was really discussed about this is a lot of these businesses who are owned, who own commercial property, they're not just in California. It is a national, um, they're companies who own businesses nationally. And when you think about businesses who own, who run a national business, one state doing one thing is not going to skyrocket the um, the expense to their customers in one area. It just doesn't make sense. So um, I really appreciate Dr. Tahara saying that because I think a lot of small businesses have been um, scared about this. And they're listening to the largest businesses that are members of the chamber and going along with them, um, because they either don't understand or they're fearful, um, that, oh my gosh, what they say is true.
Yeah, I've been watching this effort to get this done for years. And um, I'm very happy that it's finally going to appear on a ballot. I also have a lot of concern about the fact that the people who have all the money are the ones that want it to fail. And so they are the ones that have the um, ability to put out misinformation and to make it very flashy and jazzy and, and whereas when you've, the, the opposite side doesn't have those resources. And so, I mean, I know that having a resolution is, you know, I mean, it's just a resolution. It's not like we get to put a big banner somewhere, but at least it's something that we could say, yes, we support this because it will, you know, it will benefit our students, it will benefit our community, it will benefit K-12, it will benefit libraries, roads. And again, it's just coming down to that fair share. I, I'm not a native Californian, so the whole Prop thirteen to me was like a what? But um, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's just completely backward that the people at the top who make the most money are the paying the least, which is, well, I'll get off my soapbox.
I, well, I was thinking about this last night because I remember when Prop fifteen pa, or Prop thirteen passed. I was just going into middle school then, which was junior high. And um, I remember the public libraries closed, right? There were, there were, um, sports programs were slashed, after-school programs ceased to exist because of this. And I look at, at where we are today, and again, this, this goes back to just everything that's going on. And I'm reminded occasionally, um, when I teach my, my own students that we take for granted roads and that you can turn on your faucet and water comes out, that you have a park that is maintained. And these things, I, we, we look at our roads now and California has horrible roads. Well, who do you think is gonna pay for it? That, you know, if nobody's willing to put in, if everybody would just put in their fair share, I think that we'd suddenly see, oh, wow, look, look at all the things that we take for granted that are actually in good working order. So I, I'm a supporter because I know when I pay my taxes, I actually am a weird person that I don't mind paying taxes because I, I love living here and, and I see the benefits of it. Um, and it makes me really angry and it makes me embarrassed that a corporation and the people who run it are very proud of the fact that they can get away with not paying their fair share. And I'm, I'm done with it. I'm, I'm really over it. And, and I know it has to do with the environment we live in, but it's maddening. It's maddening. Because I'm paying my fair share. I want everybody to do that. So that's where I come from personally from this. But when you look at it in terms of being a board member, I, I want our students to have the benefit of as much, uh, as much funding as we can get for them. And this makes sense to me. So that's why I am a big advocate of this.
When you pay taxes and you're, and you're a public employee, it's like being self-employed.
Now, I don't know where you want to move with this. I, I'm not sure, uh, Rosa, how do we move forward? I don't know.
Sorry, I was muted. So, so you're, you're asking the board to uh, vote or to approve a resolution? And we'll bring the, you will bring the resolution at the next meeting or?
I believe so. Uh, Holly Dawson, is that correct? Where's Holly?
I, I thought you were bringing the resolution this evening for action, but.
I thought so too, but I don't see the resolution. I don't think we told, asked Catherine to put it up. I forgot.
Yes, it's not there. I'm happy to share it.
Do you have it?
Yes, I do. Hold on. I'm sorry, it did not make it up there.
I apologize. I'm the one that should have asked you to do that, and it wasn't in my list.
It just got a little crazy today. Okay, so here you are, Prop 15.
So that?
We took that one out at the, yes. And this sentence came out because it was a double of the above.
So the wording behind this resolution, we actually stole all of it, just about, from other community colleges who have made these resolutions. And we tried to make one that was positive, and that stuck to the facts. We tried to get rid of all the emotional kind of negative name-calling that were in some of them. And we just wanted to put out the facts that would support the reasons why we want to put this resolution out there. So did you want me to read it? Is there anybody who is totally objecting to this? I guess that's what I want to know.
Well, I hadn't seen the resolution. And I certainly don't think I'd be ready to vote on this today, if that's what you're asking. I have some questions and some research, I guess, that I would like to do for myself on this.
So I, yeah, I was going to suggest that, you know, being, this is very important, that we should really understand the wording of the resolution. So if we could take this for next meeting and put it on the agenda for next meeting, does that work for you?
I think that that works. I really want each and every one of you to feel good about this, and to be able to walk away and say, I support this. And if you're not feeling that way, I would rather have the resolution out there, and have you be able to look at it and do your own research on this proposition. There's lots of information out there. I pulled a lot for my slideshow, but I really encourage you to do your own research and come back with questions next month.
And if I may just add very quickly, and I know we're not taking any actions tonight, but if and when we do, keeping your college hat on. This is for the college. You can still vote against it on your own ballot. This is for the college.
This is for the college, yeah, as a board member. All right. So thank you very much, you guys, for listening to this and considering it for next time. I'd like to give the floor to Holly to, she wants to introduce a couple of items for consideration for support. I believe, Holly, it's individual support, correct?
There are two items, and this really will only take a moment. One, you'll see, there is a link here under public comment that says, "Every student counts stimulus 4.0." And Congress is debating whether further support of higher education will be distributed by student headcount or full-time equivalent student. And as you know, most of our students are part-time. So since the vast majority of college students attend part-time, the feeling is that the only equitable method is headcount. So the Chancellor's Office and the League are asking Congress to consider by headcount instead. This is simply asking you to take a moment during your leisure and fill out this little form. It even has a message in there that you just simply need to add in the name of our college, and send that off. Our local representatives do support this concept, but they need to hear from us. And they have asked us to please encourage you and others to submit these letters, because the more support they can show, the easier it is for them to make the case. And that's it for that. It's really, if you click on that link, you'll get a little overview, and we encourage you to submit an email and support. The second item is just an FYI. Undocumented Student Action Week will be taking place October 19th through 23rd, serving the largest number of undocumented students in the state. California community colleges are committed. Are committed to serving. Thank you. So that little video sort of told you the story. This is the fourth year of Undocumented Student Action Week, and it's a system-wide campaign to advocate and provide resources for undocumented students. There will be a number of webinars targeting different audiences kicking off on October 14, with focuses on financial aid, policies, student track, counseling faculty, administrators, and classified staff. And I will be sharing that information with staff, as well as the board, if anyone is interested in participating, and more to come. Just wanted to give you a heads up that we'll be planning efforts around that.
Thank you. Thank you. Very much interested in that.
Thank you, Holly. I want to, before I give you back the floor, Rosa, I want to thank you and Holly and Catherine Kittle for meeting on Tuesday. You guys are just rock stars when it comes to all this. And I really appreciate you guys helping put this together tonight. So thank you very much.
No, thank you for your passion. So we're on to number 14, Board Policy Review, 14.1. It's the first reading, Board Policy 2355.
Yes, this is a legal update that we received. They're proposing, this is from the CCLC Policy Analyst, and they are proposing these changes. And so this is your first look at it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. 15, Board Reports. Das?
We are meeting sometime in the next two weeks.
Thank you. VW Foundation Board of, Michael or?
Yeah, sorry, next, hang on a sec.
Well, we're the legislative.
So Legislative is meeting again on September 29th, to discuss possibly bringing Prop 16 to the board's attention.
Thank you. Real Property Committee?
No report, and we do not have a meeting scheduled.
McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award?
No, nothing yet. It's not that time of year yet. You have to wait until the spring.
Ah, geez.
Yeah, sorry. But then we could have cake.
Yay! I will be with you, but I'll be eating cake either from San Marino or Italy somewhere. I don't know. Foundation Board, Trustee Iverson is not here, so?
Madam Chair?
I was about to call on you, Trustee Baldini. Thank you.
Yes, back online. Our next meeting is October 1st. We have not had a third-quarter meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Future agenda items, do we have any that we would like to? Well, I guess no. Thank you.
They cleared it out. We have to come up with some new ideas.
I know! I know. Let's put our thinking hats on. Board Chair Reports. Jennifer, do you have anything to report?
I'm no.
Trustee Dodd?
Nothing to report, but major props to the college getting the grant, and Oscar and your team. Great hire with Robin, by the way. Immediate success. So well done.
Trustee Goff?
No report, thank you.
Low, Trustee Iverson, Trustee Rios?
No report.
Trustee Baldini?
No report.
And for me, other than grapes, smoke, tank, tractors, trucks, low report. Thank you very much. Do we want to continue discussing closed session?
No.
So we're adjourned. Our next, well, forget, next meeting is October 8, 2020, our regular meeting. And after that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good stuff.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Good job, Madam Chair.